I'd like to call the March 14 meeting of the Village of Moni to order at, it looks like-
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like Pastor David Shorts, the police, come up and do our invocation.
Father, we just thank you so much for who you are, your strength, your wisdom, your knowledge, your insight. Thank you, Lord, that you don't respect people, that you have a love for all people and you have a concern for our community. We pray for wisdom on our leadership. We pray God over this discussion, tonight even, that you would give insight and that you would oversee all the decisions that are being made. And we ask it in your precious son's name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much. A roll call, please.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Trustee Gray? Trustee Holston?
Present.
Trustee Horn?
Here.
Trustee Raisik?
Present.
Trustee Vincent?
Here.
Now, I'd like to move on to open to the public agenda items only. We'll move on to the consent agenda. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Janet? Any discussion on the consent agenda? If not, roll call, please.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Trustee Raisik?
Yes.
Trustee Vincent?
Yes.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
And now, we'll move to the clerk's report. Denisha?
Just for tonight, Mr. Mayor, for tonight, just letting the residents know that we do have the early voting that's still going on here at the village. It is serving only the residents of the village of Moni, and that's through the rest of the week until Friday, March 16th, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Saturday, March 17th, is 9:00 a.m. to noon. And that, once again, will be at the village boardroom. End of report.
That's 10 to 4 this week, correct?
Yes.
I'd like to call Jamelle Martin and Brent Cash, officers, more than officers now. And Chief, if you would come up. I'd just like to say that not only am I proud of the police department, and I really am, I hear, let me say, 95 percent positive things. We always have some other things, right, on almost everything we do. But we have two officers here that are no longer officers. In fact, Brent was our investigator and Jamelle was a patrolman. Well, Jamelle, who is a 14-year veteran, has been elevated to investigator. And Brent Cash is now a sergeant, and they both readily deserve this. I'd like you to give me a hand.
Congratulations, guys.
At this time, I'd like to talk about our liquor license. We've been approached by some of our businesses that serve liquor. And we'd like to change the ordinance so that it mirrors other communities. And it used to be the hours we're going to do now on an ordinance from years ago that was amended. Right now, they're allowed to open on Sundays from, what's the hours? I'm sorry, David.
Eleven.
Eleven, 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. 1:00 a.m., I mean, I'm sorry. We want to make that the same as all the other days of the week, which is 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. Is there any discussion on this? I thought I'd bring that up and see if we'd like to make a motion or anything.
I think one of the advantages to this is we have several businesses in town, one in particular that strikes me, that does motorcycle runs several times a year during the summer. And by allowing them to do that, they're able to come into town Sunday morning, which is good revenue for the village. And they enjoy coming, they're always respectful. Usually, it's charity runs that they're doing. So this will allow them to do this without having to get a special permit every time. And I did check in some of the other villages and communities in the area, and this is consistent with what they're doing as well. So if you need a motion, Mr. Mayor, I'll make it.
Is there a second to that? Okay, is there any discussion? I just have one more comment. You know, society changes. You got, knowing my age, girls never had the sports boys had when I was in high school. They had a GAA and they played between themselves, and that was it. Now, they have as many sports as the boys, which ties up to gyms now. And the younger kids are first to be playing on Saturdays and Sundays, so for indoor sports on Sundays. So this is what's happening in society, and we have to move along with that. That's why we asked for this proposal. Anyone else have any comments or discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Trustee Horn? Trustee Raisik?
Yes.
Trustee Vincent?
Yes.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, for clarity, that is a motion to authorize the attorney to draw up the amendment to the ordinance for the record.
Correct. Okay, we'll move on to the administrator's report. David?
Thank you, Mayor. I have three items on my report this evening. Item number H1 is the Main Street Storm Water Improvement Plan. Basically, this is a plan where the overall cost has been estimated in excess of $800,000. So this is a multi-year plan. It is designed to increase the storm water management along in the Main Street area. And so this evening, I'm asking for a motion authorizing staff to go out to bid on Phase One of the Main Street Water Improvement Plan. And that would be in the amount of $275,000.
Finance Committee has verified that this isn't a budget for this year, so I will make that motion.
Any other discussion? Sure, Janet.
That is correct. We're trying to maximize the amount of money that has been allocated in this budget. Yes.
Any other discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Trustee Raisik?
Yes.
Trustee Vincent?
Yes.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item on my agenda is Board Action Request, item H2. This is for the Lynn Lane Water Main Replacement. And basically, again, this is a budgeted item. Lynn Lane Water Main is in dire need of replacement. It is significantly undersized for serving the homes that are attached to that. And this is, as I stated, a budgeted amount in the amount of $329,000. And we are asking authorization to place the Lynn Lane Water Main Replacement, be put out for bid.
Any discussion on this?
Again, I'll second, and as commented again, it'll verify that it isn't a budget, has been budgeted before, has not been spent.
Janet, you seconded it?
I made the motion.
Oh, you made the motion, David seconded it? Any other discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Trustee Raisik?
Yes.
Trustee Vincent?
Yes.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Beautiful.
Yes. Next on the agenda is item H3. And H3 is the Route 50 Water Main Extension Loop. And that is on the north end of Route 50. In conjunction with the approval of redevelopment projects for Moni Liquor and May's Backyard Barbecue, the village is, needs to extend the water main along the east side of Route 50, north from approximately Wilson Street, past Moni Liquor, under Route 50, to connect to the existing water main. So this request is to authorize the Route 50 Water Main Extension be put out for bid.
I believe that is in the TIF. Darryl, is that correct? So I will make that motion again.
I'll second. Any other discussion on it? Before we continue on after a roll call, Janet, I'm going to ask you to come forward and turn this volume down. We're going to break some eardrums out there. All of a sudden, it decided. Roll call, please.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Trustee Raisik?
Yes.
Trustee Vincent?
Trustee Vincent!
Thank you. That concludes my agenda items. I do have an administrator's report that I would like to speak about. And I received this information after the agenda was printed and posted. And the information comes from Aqua. And as you may recall, Aqua has filed with the Illinois Commerce Commission for a rate increase of approximately 82.2 percent on the treatment of sanitary wastewater. That has gone through the process, and this board filed an objection, a resolution, with the Commerce Commission, objecting to that rate increase. Ultimately, I've been informed that the ICC has approved rates. And the rate that was approved was $5.82, rounds up to $5.83 per thousand gallons. And our current rate is $3.58 per 1,000 gallons. That equates to a $2.25 per 1,000 gallons increase in the sanitary waste treatment only. So that is set to go into effect on March 16th, I believe. Yes, March 16th. And we will be asking the attorney to prepare an amended ordinance to reflect that rate increase. At the same time, I've asked for validation from Aqua of the ICC's findings, so that we have validated findings for our files here. Happy to answer any questions, should there be any. But that concludes my report this evening.
Question. I believe that is a pass-through cost, so that means us residents are all going to have to pay that in our bill?
That would be correct.
Second question to the village attorney. Do we have any option to appeal that decision?
I don't believe so, sir. There was quite a few attorneys who filed on this issue, and chances of an appeal are very, very limited.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment on it, too. I literally took my water bill and figured out how much more it's going to cost me per month. And I think I'm somewhere near maybe average. And that would be a $28 increase just for that. They were looking for 82 percent increase. And they got 61, which is really unbelievable. I don't know how many of you got a 61 percent raise this year, if you know what I mean. That's being a little whatever. But it's not our fault. We did everything we could.
Mr. Wallace, are we looking at, if I remember right, somewhere in the range of 20 million plus if we wanted to do this ourselves for a facility?
That is a very rough number. The more important aspect of that is having the ability to treat our own waste, and that is that we must have an outlet for the stream water. We're looking into that as a long-range plan. That is on the books.
But short-term, this is going to, we really don't have any options. Plus, we have a long-term contract we have to honor.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, is that it, David? I'll move on to the officials' report. Public Works, Trustee Gray's not here right now. If he shows up, we'll go back to it. We expect him to be here. Parks and Recs, Trustee Vincent?
We're getting ready for the Easter egg hunt. It's going to be Saturday, March 31st. 10:00 a.m. is refreshments, and 10:30 a.m. is the egg hunt. There'll be thousands of Easter eggs hidden for the kids, so be sure to come and bring your own Easter basket. It'll be held at Fireman's Park. The new newsletter will be out the end of March, so there'll be all kind of new programs and information in it for you to enjoy. And then our team forum will be held Friday, April 13th, at 6:00 p.m. at Fireman's Park, so please join us.
Finance, Trustee Holston?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple things. Darryl gave me a copy this afternoon of the year-to-date analysis. We are on track right now, overall. Some individual accounts that I'll visit with him about tomorrow, and we'll review in the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee did have a meeting this past Monday at 6:00 p.m. It was attended by Trustee Vincent, Trustee Horn, Trustee Blue by phone due to illness, and the mayor, along with Administrator Wallace and Darryl. We will meet again in two weeks, on Monday, before the board meeting, again at 6 o'clock for those that want to come. It is a public meeting, so anybody from the public is welcome to come. Currently, we're looking at about a $1.5 million deficit in the budget. We did make the decision back in December as a board to not pass any real estate increase. So that's good. But the bad news is, there's no increase in revenue there. So we are going to have to reduce the budget in order to be able to have a balanced budget. We're absolutely committed. The village of Moni has a proud history of having a balanced budget, so we will have a balanced budget this year as well. Staff has been given some opportunity to go back and look at some things. Encourage any of the trustees that can make it to this meeting to be there. This will be our last meeting from March. We will want to have an early April meeting of the whole, Mr. Mayor, for finance purposes. We'll let you decide that. Maybe we can talk about later tonight. And then our objective is to have an approved budget by the end of April, which has been, quite frankly, years since we've done that, so that when we start the business year, which is May 1st for the village of Moni, we would have an approved budget going into the year. End of report.
I'd just like to add to it, if I may, David. Mr. Wallace and myself have directed the, all the department heads to possibly, not possibly, but cut their budget by 10 percent, which would make a real dent into this amount of money. The point being that they've already had suggestions from the Finance Committee, and they don't have to follow them, but they do have to come up with 10 percent. So if they don't, we'll make some decisions, too. So we will have a balanced budget. So, thank you, David. Building Services, Trustee Horn? I'm sorry. Oh, my God, I already put a line through yours, Janet. How about that? We'll just move on to Doug Horn. Douglas, you'll just have to wait ladies first. Janet, Economic Development, dear.
It's not because I'm the lady, but no report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, that's great. Mailed me twice on that one, I'll tell you. Now, we'll move to Building Services. Doug Horn?
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing to report other than I have heard some reports of some issues regarding some housing in town, substandard condemned housing, some different things that have been brought to the attention of the Building Services Department. And I'm very happy to say that they have been extremely quick in responding to the issues that have come up. When I say that, within the hour, that's how quick they've responded to various issues in town. And so I just want to commend them for that. And that's the end of my report.
Okay, we'll move on to Public Safety. Trustee Raisik?
I've got one thing. The Moni Police Department is dealing with a small group of protesters in the area of Tulip and Daffodil. Six to eight people have showed up at several times in the last week to protest the custody of a child. Cook County Courts have awarded the child to Moni residents. To birth mother, mother is demanding custody. It is a civil matter, and the Moni Police Department has not intervened, other than to make sure the protests are peaceful. And the information has been relayed to the Cook County authorities. End of report.
Thank you. Trustee Raisik? We'll move on to the attorney's report.
Thank you, Honor. I have one item for the board's consideration. It's an ordinance establishing administrative procedure for the assessing and determining claims under the Public Safety Act within the village of Moni. Basically, what this does, if an officer, a public safety officer, is catastrophic injury during the line of duty, he or she's entitled to benefits under the law. And what this does is basically let the village determine whether the injury occurred on duty, and also if it's catastrophic. Hopefully, it'll never have to take place in our situation, but at least this establishes an order. It's basically a hearing determined by the village. You have a hearing officer, you'll have rules of evidence. And at that time, a decision is made whether that applicant is qualified to receive benefits. And all this does is establish that procedure. And the IML has suggested that home rural units of government have this online, I'm sorry, in order. So it's up for the board's review and consideration.
Would I have a motion, please, Alice?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion.
I have questions. I'm sorry. So, does this apply to anybody working on the village's behalf?
Public safety officers. So it's for police department personnel or fire department. We don't have a fire department for our police department.
Would it include Ema?
They could file an application. Then the board would make that determination whether he or she will qualify for it. But at least, if it's on the books, at least we have the determination as opposed to an insurance company.
Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
The insurance company is the one who determines it now?
At this present time, they have the right to do so. But what we want to do is get ahead of that, so we can make that determination. Then it's up to the applicant to meet that burden of proof.
Isn't this in line with a couple bills that are in the state right now?
I believe so.
Yeah.
Because IML has suggested strongly during their conferences to have this adopted.
Well, this is probably going to be something that'll be passed during this legislative period, and we may as well go ahead and get ahead of the game.
Yes. And if it's modified, we could amend the ordinance accordingly. But at the fall conference, I think it was mentioned at the conference.
I just wanted to say that we use a lot of abbreviations these days. I've seen them where they're four letters long. IML is the Illinois Municipal League, just so you know that one anyway. David? Yeah. Any other discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Trustee Raisik?
Yes.
Trustee Vincent?
Yes.
Ordinance number, please.
Ordinance number is 1832.
That's all I have, Your Honor.
Okay. Is there any old business?
Just the, Mr. Wallace, you promised us at the last meeting that you would give us an update on the webpage tonight. I didn't want to disappoint you and not ask about it.
I don't recall saying that. I'm just-
It's in the minutes, I believe.
Yes. We have met with department heads and IT staff to discuss the possible candidates of the companies for vetting. We're vetting for the website. We are moving along with that. All the department heads and their chosen staff as well have been part of that discussion. Temporarily, we do have on our webpage, which is the same web address, villageofmoni.org, where you can, there are village meetings up there. And when there is an upcoming village meeting, we will post the agenda as soon as it's available. So that is a temporary solution. And again, we will be bringing forth our recommendation to this board as soon as possible. And I would hope that it's by the next board meeting, but we want to do our due diligence, so that we have something that is very workable and is very interactive with the public.
Since we have several members of the public here tonight for the first time, would you mind updating everybody as to why we don't have a webpage?
Yes.
Sorry.
Yes. Our website was actually managed by a third party, and it was hosted on GoDaddy. And what had happened is there obviously was a disconnect between GoDaddy and the third party which managed our website. And GoDaddy shut down that server. And what happened was it shut down our website without a backup. And so everything was lost. And that put us in the predicament that we're in today. So our internal IT was able to put up what's called the splash page up there. And we have maintained the ability to pay bills online, water bills in the sort. Also, we did post a couple of job positions on that. And just recently, we added the meeting agendas, and that will be maintained. You won't have a history of meeting agendas, but as they become available, we'll take down what's there, put up the next meeting agenda. Example would be the upcoming Finance Committee meeting. That will be posted on the website.
Thank you.
I have a question. So with the taping of the board meeting, how does the public get to see that now? Because isn't WPAL, aren't they supposed to put it on YouTube?
That's my understanding. Deputy Clerk Powell forwards that video that's taking place this evening, the following morning, to WPAL, and then it is uploaded.
Okay. Would it be possible also to post anything timely or pertinent, like job postings, to have some kind of Facebook message to say, hey, check the website, you know, job postings are up, or something like that? Because Facebook is certainly very well utilized.
Certainly. We can advertise that and make a posting on Facebook, on the village page, when something changes. And it could drive people to the web splash page there.
That would be very helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Wallace, one thing. Agendas for meetings, those are posted 48 hours ahead of a meeting. Is that standard?
Minimum 48 hours in advance, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And we will post them to the web splash page as soon as possible after that. It's an IT event that has to have that done. It's not as simple for staff to do that.
Any other old business? Move on to new business. Any new business?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to update the board on information I received at the Will County Legislative Day. Trustee Blue and I both attended that, along with Administrator Wallace. And Kevin Daly, our very capable economic director. Couple things, almost humorous, but not really. A couple bills that are in front of the legislature this time include a bill that would require villages like Moni to shovel all the snow, driveways, sidewalks of anybody who's over 55 years old. Now, that sounds really cool, but can you imagine the expense? I'm over 55, so personally, it sounds like a great idea. But I don't know how we would ever come up with the money to do something like that. No revenues planned. This is one of those non-funded bills that have been put, and there's a lot of those put forward. So that's one- So that's one that we're opposing, and we're working hard to make sure that, even though it's a great idea, when you don't provide for the funding for that, it becomes a bill burden to a village like Moni that doesn't have extra money to begin with. Additionally, Representative Anthony DeLuca, who represents a portion of Moni, but not most of Moni, has forwarded two bills that are very helpful. One is to reduce the tax, we call it a tax, don't we, Darrell? That they use to recover, that they take on our revenue, that they're taking out of two percent to one percent. It was supposed to be a one-year tax only, but it's already been determined it'll be more than one year. And like everything else in Springfield, it becomes permanent. But he's trying to get that down to one percent. We're hopeful that that will get approved this year, and we're supporting that. A number of other bills were discussed. We'll have the opportunity to follow up on that next month for those of us that go up there for IML Day and continue to work with our legislators. We had the opportunity, I had the opportunity to go into every legislator that is represented in Moni to their office and at least drop a car off. In most cases, they were not available, but at least be able to discuss with them. And I'm working toward trying to set up some meetings with them, and I know IML will be as well with them next month when we go back up. I wanted to point, give that report to the Board.
Thank you, Trustee Holston. Anyone else with new business? If not, we'll move on to open to the public, non-agenda items. Please limit your comments to three minutes. You must come to the podium and give your name and address.
Good evening, can you hear me? It's green, can you hear me? Yeah. It's on, okay. So, good evening, everyone. My name is Catherine Roltimi. My residence is on six-four-three-six West Birch Court in Gorman Farms. I come to you with a concern. Foremost, I did email you, you replied, Trustee Blue and Trustee Horn, so thank you. I replied in concern with the development that's going on, is in the works, according to what I understand, which is a gas station on Ridgeland and Moni Manhattan Road. I understand it's in the works, it's in the talks. Being that the fact that that is the intersection to our residents, especially those that live in Gorman Farms, I feel that, number one, my voice wasn't heard, no one asked how would this impact our traffic that we have in the morning. We already have excessive traffic, understandably because of Amazon. I understand that, that's not a problem with me. However, having an additional bus, gas station, I don't know what you're calling it, I've heard like three different words or terms for it. But we already have about four in Moni. I also heard that it was supposed to have a restaurant-type business, which of course Moni has at least two dozens of restaurants. So my concern is that, number one, it's a saturated business already in Moni. Number two, when I saw on YouTube, you're referring to that, on YouTube, the Board meeting that did discuss, there was a gentleman up here asking, and I don't remember who it was that said that they wanted to take advantage of the employees that were in Amazon, so when they went out into Moni, they're coming or leaving from work, they can get gas and get lunch. At no time did I hear anyone say, this is to the benefit of the residents of Moni. I understand that we need to increase our economy, I'm all for that. But at the same time, we need to think of our residents, the people who live there, people who are going to be inconvenienced by this particular location. Like I said, we already have four, five maybe, bus, gas station, places to eat. We will not go hungry in Moni if we have money. That I can guarantee you. Make our lives easier. Make it pleasurable to live in Moni. Give us what we need. Grocery stores, retail, so that way we don't have to go to Matson, Tinley, Flossmore, Orland Park, to go get basic necessities like a gallon of milk and groceries. Yes, I can go to the gas station for a gallon of milk. So obviously, I'm exaggerating there a little bit. But the convenience of having a grocery store, for example, Myers is a perfect example. They have food court, grocery store, and gas station. My point to this is think of the residents of Moni. I understand where your heart is. Bringing up the economy, boosting our economy, I understand that. But think of us. What conveniences are we lacking? And therefore, we can bring up our Village of Moni, get other people to move in, and it's a win-win situation. And Amazon can cross the street to the food court where we buy our groceries, and it's a win-win situation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. We do care about the residents and understand that this is in its infancy stage. Nothing's been determined yet. Anyone else for open to the public?
Everyone, my name is Siobanda Nix. I'm at the address of two-sixty-five forty-one South Winfield Road. Pretty much piggybacking on everything that she said. I'm one of the residents that goes back and forth, and the traffic just alone is a nightmare. Literally, coming in and out of where I stay, where I pay taxes. And again, I understand you all want to bring in revenue, but give us what we need. Grocery stores, a pharmacy department, where we don't have to go into Matson, because Matson is shutting down, there's nothing there. So where are we going? Orland, Frankfurt, Kankakee? I don't, I mean, to be honest, like she pretty much said, and no one even considered or asking or to think about what we would feel like. When I come out, I've made a police report, I've even came up to Moni Village to find out where I need to go, because when I come out on Ridgeland, there's bottles, food, garbage, just everywhere. And it's sad, looking out where we pay taxes and where we live. And I know that it's not coming from the people that actually live in the area, because it's Wendy's bags, it's Walgreens bags, it's a whole list of just garbage. And it's not tasteful at all. So if you all can consider to put that in the thoughts, to think of giving us a grocery store, or a food court, or a pharmacy department where we can stay and keep the money inside of, with Moni. Thanks for hearing me out.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else for open to the public?
Hi, my name is Chris Scott, and I'm at sixty-four-thirty Lakeway Drive, just a little bit north than these gales. Again, the concern is over what is being proposed possibly. I'm assured now that it's not a done deal about the truck stop that's going in, which is very different than just a gas station. And as residents of Lakeview Estates, we ask that this please not go through. We deal with the first warehouses that were put in our backyards a number of years ago. The noise keeps us from opening bedroom windows at night. We deal with the nightmare of Amazon traffic on a daily basis. While it's easesome with the holiday season over, it still is a huge problem. That corner is congested enough with the truck and employee traffic that goes in and out of there. Adding more trucks, another corner that will be lit up twenty-four-seven with these massive lights that are up in Amazon, similar to what would be at a place like this. The noise that comes from it, that it's hard to even be in our backyard because of all the truck breaking and just the pulling in and out and that. The pollution from all the diesel trucks that are going in and out, we don't need more of that on that corner. There's two other truck stops, as well as a full-service gas station right over the bridge. Why does the size of our town need three truck stops? We don't need another one, and I ask that you please do not allow this to go in, not just for us that are on that side of fifty-seven, but for anybody in town who has to go up and down Manhattan-Moni Road. It's a nightmare. I had sent this email to everybody here. I did hear from Trustee Blue in Holston. Talked briefly beforehand with Trustee Horn. We feel like we don't get heard on that side of fifty-seven. Everything is all about what's over here. We're not heard. I don't understand why Lakeview Estates was developed as a residential property. We were here before it was zoned for what's going in there now. It used to be zoned for tree farms and that. The residents were there. Why would you approve a residential subdivision like that and then go ahead and put that in our backyards? We're estate properties with two and a half, three acres for each of us, expensive housing, my property taxes are astronomical, and now, when it comes time to someday me sell my house, who wants it when that's in our backyard? Who would want it when we add a truck stop? I wanted to ask too, if I've heard that of the three corners, that there is a warehouse already committed to being built there, and I would like to know if that's true, which means then there's another warehouse, more trucks, more employees going in and out, that whole corner. Is there another warehouse coming on one of the three empty corners? I know that this Thornton thing proposal is for the northeast corner. Is there anything proposed or in the works for the northwest or the southeast corners of that intersection?
I would be happy to answer that for you. There is not anything proposed for any of the other corners there.
No more warehouses going in there or on Ridgeland Avenue?
Yeah, let me, yes, I was going to elaborate on my answer. Not on the corners. There is a proposed warehouse that is north on Ridgeland. I'm going to say approximately maybe eight hundred feet, a thousand feet north of Moni Manhattan on Ridgeland Avenue.
Basically, right there.
Yes.
We're talking a football field away, correct?
A little bit more than that, but yes, I mean, it's in our village limits, and it is proposed on the north end. It's at our northernmost village limits on Ridgeland Avenue, on the east side of Ridgeland Avenue.
Okay, I've heard about budget deficits. With all of these big things going in, what have we gained monetary-wise by having Amazon here? Do we get anything for that? Or is everybody getting their TIF deals that, you know, do, what are we gaining as residents from these massive businesses coming in here? Do we financially gain anything from them?
We do. Number one gain has been the jobs, if you're speaking specifically of Amazon, is the jobs. But we also gain in the, within the TIF district itself, which is a large area. And the monies that are gained within that TIF district are used to improve the infrastructure within that TIF district. And the infrastructure can run from sanitary to water main to roads. And what that does is it helps alleviate the general budget of having to take care of those types of infrastructure. It doesn't cover all the infrastructure, though.
And we wouldn't need the infrastructure if we didn't have those massive places there. So, we wouldn't need it. We're not small-town, country-feeling Moni. When I moved here fifteen years ago, it's, it used to be that, you know, I had to get used to the crickets and the bullfrogs and the quietness. I had to get used to the darkness, because I lived in Tinley, and, you know, there's lights and that everywhere. I last night tried to see stars, and I can't, because the sky is too light by us now with these massive lights that are up there. We don't want more of that on those three vacant lots. I know it's zoned, I know eventually something will go in there, but I hope you're pickier and choosier than putting some big, massive project up there. I appreciate you responding too, for the phone call and for your email. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mahi Tritzerolas, and this is my fiancee, Casey Dugan.
We live at two-five-nine-one-eight Derby Drive. I'll let her kind of do most of the talking, but we, we're just a small family starting up. We moved out here, it's a quiet town, we really like it here a lot. She grew up way north side of the city in a very rough neighborhood.
It was south side, definitely south side.
Well, yeah, it was a little rough.
I wish I was on the north side of the city, not go.
So, it's just come to our realization from a lot of areas now on the north side of Moni Manhattan, a lot of businesses actually, to put it bluntly, we seem like a crutch town, in a way, to other surrounding cities in our township. And when we're-
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
We seem to be almost like a crutch, in a way, to other cities. A crutch.
Thank you.
In a way, to where a lot of our tax money is going to other cities, or Aqua, or all this other increases now. And if we could have something that actually benefit us, like they said, these grocery stores, tax increases going there, that would help us a lot more than just having industry buildings, when really, if you're trying to drive revenue and there's deficits, I have an MBE, I get it, but when you have all these deficits going on, really, all you're doing is just driving people out. That's really all it's coming down to. We haven't been here very long, but it's clear to see that a lot of unhappy people with a lot of changes in the past year, and this really isn't the place, you know, the way to build a community, unfortunately.
I just want to add to that, like, traffic doesn't bother me, I'm from south side. I actually kind of miss traffic sometimes, I go high. So for me, it's not that issue. For me, it was more of, if we want to build the town into a residential area, and that's what I thought I was moving into, because people were like, yeah, we're getting new businesses all the time. And I was like, okay, let's check it out then. And now I see, like, there's more warehouses coming, there's more truck stops coming. And to put it bluntly, no one wants to live in a truck stop town. If I did, I would have gone further out into a truck stop town. And the only way you're going to get more residents here is if there's more retail for residents and things that residents want. A truck stop doesn't serve me. I don't even go to the truck stops to fill up, because it's such a hassle. I go to Seven-Eleven, because it's quiet there, quieter than other places.
Or we pay five dollars for a gallon of milk.
Yeah. And exactly, you have to pay five dollars for a gallon of milk. But my issue is that if you want more, you're going to push residents out, because there's no resources here for them. And who's going to balance out that TIF then, if you don't have residents paying into it? We're going to create a ghost town where not even businesses like warehouses and truck stops are going to want to come, because there's no residents to pay that TIF. So it's going to be sad that we just moved into a house and bought our first home in September, and we're already thinking of moving and trying to sell, and worried we won't even make back what we bought it for. That's kind of a scary climate for us, too. We're young, starting out, we don't really have much equity as it is. We put everything into home that we might have to leave now, because there's going to be nothing here for us. So, just take that into consideration from us young people trying to move in here.
Yeah, thank you for your time, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments.
My name is Sonia Bealack, and I live at sixty-four-thirty-seven Lakeway Drive, in Ridgeland Lake Estates, also Lakeview Estates. I'd just like to piggyback off of what you've already set up from Gorman Farms, as well as my neighbor, is that we initially had bought our lot fifteen years ago, thinking it was a very peaceful, calm, country sort of setting, and little by little, you started seeing that drift away. The last thing that I feel we need would be a truck stop or any additional facilities like that, because it does bring in a tremendous amount of congestion, traffic, pollution, it's things that, you know, your kids tend to notice, instead of the trees growing, or this is happening, oh mommy, look at that truck, look at that truck, this semi, that semi. The danger factor alone, the Moni Police Department and Will County, when they were there helping out with Amazon over the holidays, were doing a tremendous job, but it's just too difficult for them to supply everything, the safety that we need. Driving here alone, my neighbor got cut off by a semi coming down Moni Manhattan Road. It happens all the time, on the way to school in the morning, on the way to work, you know, after work, going home. So, as she said, the noise pollution, the pollution in general, it's not something that we had intended. And why it's industrial smack up against residential, I don't understand that. We pay our tremendous amount of taxes, we'd like to see those going towards better things for the community. I work for a realtor in the area- I work for a realtor in the area, and you constantly hear people saying that house values are going down, they're going down. No, they're not. They're actually increasing. They'll never be to the point of where we would like to see them or where they were, but it's a gradual progression. But this is not going to help our house values. For what I'm paying for in taxes is not what I would be able to turn around and sell my house for. I don't want to move, but unfortunately, that's sometimes an area that you get pushed into. We chose to raise our family here, and we'd like to continue doing so. But we'd like to see something that would benefit the community, more programs for the kids and more things for the families to get involved in, things like a grocery store. I know it's very difficult. You have to look at the branches that wanna come here. We're a smaller town, so you can't get the big names here. But something to work towards that versus just another truck stop, another gas station, there's other avenues to be able to look at. So, I just hope that you take our consideration, you know, what we would like to see for our families and to continue grow Moni into something wonderful that we know it could be versus taking steps backwards. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for open to the public?
Hi, my name is Sharon Daly Gabriel. I'm at 5212 West Mulberry Lane. So I'm technically in Moni proper, if you would call it, versus the other side of 57. However, and Janet can attest to this, I travel Manhattan-Moni Road every day. I travel back and forth to New Lennox, where I have a second job. I travel to go pick up Sonia's child or drop her off. I have been cut off, almost sideswiped, from trucks coming in and out of the truck stops. The police did a phenomenal job at the holidays, like everyone is saying. However, our lines on our expressway or our roadways going over the bridge, people that are not familiar with our traffic pattern, were using that lane that is not supposed to be used on the bridge as a second lane. All of a sudden, normal residents would be driving over and you would get cut off. The trucks will stop coming out of the truck stops and let other trucks come out, because there's so much traffic now. So, I'm just going to piggyback on everybody else, just stating using Manhattan-Moni Road is more dangerous just to an everyday driver in the city or in the village to get in and out. There is technically really only one way, unless we travel to a lot of the other auxiliary roads, to get in and out of Moni. That's on the expressway there at 57. So we have to take that into consideration. The whole point of the Stunkel Road exit was for truck traffic to be alleviated to our north. Why can we not have another truck stop there where it was supposed to have been put, instead of at our exit? I do not want to have any fatalities. I do not want to hear about anybody else being hurt on those expressways because we have more truck traffic. And the warehouses, I understand, I'm also in real estate. I understand we need economic growth. We absolutely do. We need more apartment buildings in this area. We need more rental. We need more area opened up to develop to residential that's for, if you're gonna look at Amazon or other warehouses, that can be used, that are more cost-effective. We don't need, and I am a huge, I know about it because I have seven rentals on my block for the corporate rentals. I'm talking about apartment buildings that are affordable for people in the area, or condominiums or something else, not just warehouses. We need additional tax-based structure increase. You wanna build the residences, we have to build the structures. We can't be dependent just on warehouses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for open to the public? I just can't help saying a couple words here. Number one, this administration and previous administrations, the number one priority is a grocery store. Let me say that. But this town, its history, to me, wanted to stay horse and buggy. How can you allow University Park, I'm not just picking on them, but when you drive down going east from the bridge, going over 57, every other building, Moni, University Park, Moni, University, Moni let them come in and take whatever property they want. The Pilot Gas Station, we get revenue from the automobiles. University Park gets the trucks on the back end. It's ridiculous. We're fighting this kind of an atmosphere where that's where this town sits right now. We've got about fifty-two-hundred people. We have a long-range plan we're studying right now. Obviously, we want a grocery store. You ask any trustee here. Everyone's sick of talking about it. But God, I'm telling you, I can't say anything. We're working on it diligently, okay? I can't tell you what we're doing, but we are. Trust my word right here, retail's very important to us. I even went to the Loop and got on Comcast, which Comcast goes all over the state, and I had an interview there talking about Moni, and they allowed me to pick the subjects. Well, one was retail, and the other was homes, people coming in to build homes. Our five-year plan has that in it. I'm gonna sound like some other mayors, but I believe we'll have a grocery store, or at least of being built during my term here. I really feel that way. I want that terribly bad for all of us. The Dollar General there, yes, it's a little help, okay? But I understand what you just want. The areas we're talking about building on can possibly, if we do it, if it, it's in its infancy, can bring a lot of revenue. And it is in an industrial area. I have attended every meeting that the Freight Division for Will County has and told them about, and I know this is filmed, I don't want I dot people to hear what I'm gonna say, but that bridge is the biggest mistake ever made, okay? I know how I get into BP sometimes, and it's not the safest way to get into BP, okay? And the police allow it. They do. We ought to be ticketed for what we do, trying to make it to the gas station on the side road there. If there's not a vehicle there, I'll go to it. I'll admit that to you. Others do, too. We have many, many problems here. We're very flat, even though we're a high elevation here. We have a tremendous water problem. It's very important that we continue to improve the system, okay? Why do we flush during the summer? Our main line is cast iron. It would take millions and millions of dollars to replace that stuff. It rusts. But our water passes every EPA regulation. We have a great DPW supervisor and a great team there. We're here for you. I know you're not happy with what's going on. It doesn't mean it's gonna happen, but we're looking into it. Right now, they almost walked away because we didn't like their exiting and entering and all that. It's in a very primary position right now. We hear you. We live here, too.
Not over there.
But we live here and we care. I've driven the streets, okay? We spend our time, we do our diligence. That's why some of the trustees have responded to you, okay? That's what we wanna do. We wanna do the right things. We don't think, do things to punish people, so let me just end it that way, okay? We appreciate your remarks. They're not forgotten. Thank you all very much.
May I ask some questions?
You certainly may.
Thank you. How do I keep informed as a taxpayer, as a resident of Moni? How do I know?
Okay. Come, come, go ahead.
For example, I look at the agenda here.
Sure.
And it's like the new business, old business, it doesn't say what it is.
We don't know, we usually don't know what it is.
So, if you present a new business today, would I see it on here next month, on the agenda? That's why I stay informed.
What's been discussed by committees, we have a committee, as you saw, everyone reported. If they wanna have a meeting, that's posted, what's going on there. Something may come on a committee meeting that will get on new business. Every once in a while, something we didn't decide before comes up as old business, like tonight, there were a couple of things. You are informed, I'm sorry that the site's been down like that. It wasn't our fault either, honest, I sound like nothing's our fault. But that's a true fact. We're trying to get the information to you every way we can. We have trustees here that love Facebook. I'd like to take it and choke it, but whatever. But we're doing our best. We're doing our diligence, due diligence for you guys, okay?
How do I stay informed? So you're saying go to the website and there'll be-
Information there, yes, it's gonna keep improving. David, did you wanna say something about the website?
Mr. Mayor.
You're right. So, I'd like to kinda end the conversation if I could. I just wanted to make some comments to you, that we are working very diligently for retail in this town. I mean, we need it bad. We know that. And we are working on it. We're not just sitting back. There's things in the making, okay?
Mr. Mayor.
But the wheels of progress move slow.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Could I speak?
You certainly may.
Thank you. Ms. Rotini, correct?
Rotini with an M.
Okay, I'll work on that. My hearing's not that good. My wife said that anyway. A couple of things I wanna add to what the mayor said. First of all, procedurally, we can't pass new business tonight as we're introduced. So if we introduce new business, it'll be reviewed at the next meeting as well. WPL does videotape, or we videotape incentive for WPL, and they normally will have it on within a couple of days on Facebook. They should be doing YouTube. We're working and we're very close to having our meetings broadcast on the web as well through other things, so we're working on that. The obvious answer is, of course, we encourage the public to come to the meetings. We meet the second and fourth Wednesday every month, but that's not always possible. Trustee Blue has a nasty habit of coming to the meetings a couple hours early in case people wanna discuss things with her. I have made myself more than available to do that as well. One of the things you can obviously do is send emails like you did today, and we'll try as best we can to respond. Generally speaking, it's better to go specifically to one trustee rather than to all of us, because then we're not sure which one of us is gonna respond. And because of Open Meetings Act, we're careful not to do anything jointly, because we get in trouble with the government for that. I think the good news is, everything I heard tonight is not any different than what we want. We want retail here. We want good, old-time home values. My wife is fourth-generation Moni. She, her family helped start this town. The home we lived in was built 1918. Family lived in that home until we bought it. I've been here twenty years. I don't have the luxury of living out there where there's three acres and I get to see things. I live right next to the bar over here and I get to hear people on Saturday night. And then I get to hear the train every day come through. So I certainly appreciate what you're talking about. When you choose the area you live in, sometimes you know what to expect, sometimes you don't. Previous generations made this area industrial, I'm not sure why. I do wanna clarify, though, that the service facilities that we're talking about here are not, is not a truck stop. I've said this multiple times. It is primarily, and I don't know, Mr. Wallace, are you prepared to talk about that? Or are you going to? I'm going to then, whatever your pleasure.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. The value of being a trustee, you can do things that people don't want you to do, because you elected me, not them.
We're actually being advised by our lawyer not to talk too much about it, because it's still in process, and this is the kinda thing you do. Businesses get upset.
I'll be happy to talk to you privately about it then. And I have your contact information, so I'll contact you. And I know Paul, I've been trying to set up a meeting with you. Unfortunately, when you're negotiating, you can't do some things publicly. But I'll be happy to talk with you privately, and we can discuss after the meeting how we do that, and give you some additional information.
Would you like to just have your phone?
Yeah, sure.
As a resident, what are you working on, what's possibly coming down?
Well, and I wanna point out that we have openings on various committees. We'd love to have some of you on there. I heard someone say he was an MBA a minute ago. We'd love to have an MBA on a village committee. Some of these committees, you get a whole hundred dollars a month. Trustees get a whole four hundred dollars a month, so we're pretty rich. But we, you know, we want the same things you want. Now, the, back to this for just a second, I am gonna say this. There is a study available that was done four years ago on retail, when we were looking at the grocery store. We had one specifically done, and we had grocery stores as part of this survey. The reason grocery stores are not here is because the market's not here. And the market's not here because we don't have retail and because we don't have new homes. And you don't have new homes because there aren't jobs here. And there aren't jobs here because there aren't factories here. And there aren't factories here, you know, it all kinda ties in together. And so what we're trying to do is, on a very measured basis, bring in new warehouses. Immediately after Amazon opened up, we start getting inquiries about real estate. We've had three new starts since then, we have more new starts coming. People are wanting to move to Moni now. So I'll take issue with anybody in the room that tells me people don't wanna move here. There are people moving here right now. There are people looking to move here right now. We are trying to have measured growth. We're not going to get a grocery store until we can demonstrate that the volume is here. We had a pharmacy, somebody mentioned pharmacy, we had a pharmacy, it shut down, ma'am. And the reason it shut down is because it wasn't making money. And it won't make money until we have the people here to do that. So we're working on that. All of that takes a lot of time and planning, and believe you and me, we would love to have some of you helping us. We're all in this together. You may live across town, or on the other side of the road, or you may live on this side of the road, but we all live in Moni, it's our community. I'll also take issue with anybody that says there's not a lot of things to do. You should come out to the park in the summer, because we have all kinds of park events in the summer. Our park budget is three times what it was three years ago, because we're trying to make sure we have more programs for families, for children, for seniors, and we do it. Mary Jo, who was previously the park, the Parks and Recreation Person, is doing a great job, and Diana, who's taken over her, is doing a fantastic job, and we have lots of programs. So I will take issue with anybody in the room that says this is not a great place to live. It's a great place to live. And I have lots of friends in neighboring towns who will agree with me. I have people that come to me all the time and say, "What is Moni doing?" Well, first of all, we have a balanced budget, and we keep a balanced budget. University Park is so, excuse me, ma'am?
You said we're learning how to do it.
The proposed budget, the passed budget will be a balanced budget. We have not passed a budget that wasn't balanced in years, and we'll continue to do that. We're committed to that. But that means we have to either come up with revenue or cut services. And I don't like tax increases on my real estate tax, because I pay too much, too. Not as much as people in communities around us are right now, but I still pay too much. And I'm retired, so I understand that. But we have to continue to work toward bringing other revenue sources in, or we can't offer services, some of which are mandated. We have thirteen million dollars, I'm sorry, I'll get off my horse in a second, but we have thirteen million dollars in infrastructure approvals that have to be done, and we're not getting any money from the government on that. The Village of Moni has to find a way to come up with that. And so, as we, as we find ways, the one thing I don't wanna do is to do that by a tax increase on real estate. Because again, I'm fixed income and that affects me. So we're committed to finding ways to doing that without having to do a real estate tax increase. And we did not pass a tax increase this year on real estate. Other communities around us did. We did not. Now, that doesn't mean we want this next year. We have to do something to contend with our bills, but we're doing everything we can to minimize what we might have to do.
David, can I ask you to?
I'll be quiet, thank you.
Thank you very much. Look, I'm gonna allow the administrator to answer a questionnaire, and we're gonna close open to the public for now. If you wanna come to the next meeting, please do, okay? Thank you all for your patience. And you've been very nice about it, even though you're angry. We're working on it. We're trying to be on your team. David?
Yes, ma'am. I just wanted to answer your question. The best place to get the information would be on the web splash page, it's up there when we upload the board packet. Not only will you have the agenda for the current meeting, but you will have the minutes from the previous meeting that you can review, and that goes into a little bit more detail. Our clerk is actually getting tired of writing right now, but, so that will help you out. But as a last resort, always know that you could call here, get a copy of the minutes, or I'm sure that staff would put you through to the right person to answer any particular questions that you would have. Yes, you're welcome. Yes, you're welcome.
We're going to move into executive session. We've got collective bargaining to deal with, 5ILCS 120/2C2, and then purchase and lease of real property, 51LCS 120/2C5. So I really don't know how long we'll be with collective bargaining. We might be a little while because we got to do our, our work in there now. So, thank you all so much. A motion to adjourn?
No.
I mean to go into executive session?
Second.
Second, no discussion, roll call, please.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Trustee Raisik?
Yes.
Trustee Vincent?
Yes.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.